What was that?
Oh dear God, I have to look at myself. Help. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Tiburon Town Council meeting for tonight, November 6th. Lee, would you like to give some general public information on how to submit public comment and oral communication?
Can I do a roll call first?
No, I was talking about the first paragraph. But I will do the roll call and then we'll move to direction for open time comments, which is what you do.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Nikvar.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Wellner.
Here.
Vice Mayor Thier.
Here.
And Mayor Fredericks.
Here. So that confusion had to do with the first part of the agenda about how to email or attend meetings or attend by Zoom. But now Lee will give us direction on how to make comments now in open time on items that are not on the agenda.
Yes, thank you. If you're calling in on Zoom and would like to make a comment during this meeting, please use the raise hand feature of Zoom, which will indicate to me you would like to make a comment. You can find the raise hand button on your Webinar Controls Bar on the bottom of your Zoom window or smartphone screen. If you're calling and using a phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand.
Is there anyone in the room who would like to make a comment on an item or subject that is not on the agenda? Yes.
Hi.
All right.
First of all, I just wanted to say, I don't think the vote's gonna change. So I wanted to offer sincere congratulations to my, the two incumbents on the election. One of the things, I just hope you guys had as much fun as I did on this campaign. I actually did really enjoy it. But one of the things I was gonna propose if I did, you know, get elected, was to suggest that we all get together, that the council, all the candidates, and probably department heads, and just talk about what we learned. Basically, you know, I think it's important, one, showing how we can pivot from being competitors to immediately being team members. What I talked about at the arc debate, Team Tiburon. I think our population would really appreciate that. We knocked on hundreds of doors, hundreds of conversations, and we have an opportunity while still fresh in our mind to get a really good picture of what our community is feeling, thinking, and upset about or happy about. And call it a unity meeting, focus group meeting, whatever. But I think we would all benefit from it. But most importantly, our citizenry would see that we're really working for the veteran Tiburon, and we would all learn on how you want to go forward. So that's what I was gonna propose. So now I'm putting it in your lap. And yes, it's just been 24 hours, but we should do it at some point while it's fresh in our heads. And let's try to make it fun. We'll each have fun, fun stories of the, of the whole thing as well. So that's, I just wanted to propose that. And then finally, I'm here to help. If you guys ever need my help, my history project ideas on a thing you want to tackle, I am always here to help. Wish you the best.
Thank you, Andrew. Is there any further public comment? I am seeing none. We'll move now to the consent calendar. Would any member of the public like to make a comment on the consent calendar? I am seeing none. Anyone on Zoom?
Seeing none.
So I bring it back to the council. Any member of the council want to pull any of the items from consent?
Yes, I would like to pull consent item one, please.
All right. May I have a motion to pass the remaining consent calendar item?
So moved.
Second.
You don't need a roll, do you need a roll call? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Yes, Vice Mayor Thier.
Yes, I am just pulling this item in order to recognize that the Tiburon Peninsula Chamber of Commerce has named the Angel Island Tiburon Ferry as the recipient of the Chamber of Commerce Business of the Year Award. And I want to give a big shout out to Maggie, and also to our town that is working to electrify our ferry system. We're getting a grant from CARB. If anyone doesn't know about it, please check in with us. But I wanted to pull this from consent in order to acknowledge the great work that's being done by this town, and also by Maggie, who has, and her family, who have run a ferry service in Tiburon for many decades. So, thank you.
All right. Would you like to make a motion?
I would strongly support consent item one.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes. We move now to presentations. We have a presentation on the transportation and infrastructure study. Is there a staff report?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, and members of the public. This May, past May, Tiburon Town Council authorized a town manager to approve a contract with Parametrics, Inc., to start a traffic study here in Tiburon, mainly along Tiburon Boulevard and around the schools, Paradise and Tressel Glen, to basically look at all of the existing infrastructure deficiencies and provide a roadmap for the town to follow, for improvements to alleviate the traffic issues we have. Parametrics did start their study this summer, and they are here this evening to provide Town Council an update on what they have learned thus far. We also want to let the Town Council members of the public know as well that we will be having our first workshop in December, December 3rd, I believe it's Tuesday. So please check the town's website for more details on that. It'll be an in-person workshop here in Chambers. So with that being said, we have David Parisi and Jen Schreiber from Parametrics Engineering, or Parametrics, Inc., the traffic consultants that will provide a presentation on what they have learned so far.
Thank you, David. I'm David Parisi with Parametrics. And good evening, Mayor and City Council. Jen Schreiber and I are gonna share this presentation, and we'll open it up to questions. Next slide, please. Where's that? Excellent. I'm gonna cover the project purpose and some of the background. Tonight, we're actually gonna be chatting mostly about what we've learned about existing conditions, and as we're moving into some of the future operations and conditions that we're gonna be examining shortly thereafter. As David mentioned, the project purpose is evaluate the existing and future needs, primarily along Tiburon Boulevard, that is Highway 131, but also some focus on your principal art materials, Paradise Drive, where it weaves in and out of the town, as well as Tressel Glen Boulevard. We're gonna be really focusing on identifying strategies to reduce congestion, but also improve movement for all modes, and encourage use by all modes along Tiburon Boulevard. As David mentioned, we're with Parametrics, 800-person transportation planning and engineering firm. We brought on two subcontractors who are specialists in traffic signals, that's DKS Associates, and also in looking at some of the big data that's available to SSW Trans. An advisory committee has been formed. Some of you are on it. It's been, it's met twice. It consists of Mayor Fredericks, Timothy from Post, two, two folks from Belvedere, including Councilmember Sally Wilkinson, and Bob McCaskill. Transportation Authority of Marin is represented by Derek McGill, and Caltrans, because Tiburon Boulevard, of course, is a state highway, is also on the committee.
I actually have a question about the committee. Do you know how the committee was formed?
Yes, we actually appointed, we, we asked, I believe it was, in Town Council, it may have been a meeting, I can't remember, Councilmember Wellner, if you were at the meeting, but we had appointed, council appointed two members from, from council to be on this committee.
Okay, so who's the second?
Oh, I'm sorry, one person. And then this, yeah, the second is Timothy Burr. He is a, he is a commissioner on the post commission.
Okay, so I may have missed the creation of this committee. Maybe I wasn't, maybe it was a meeting I was not, and maybe, I'm not sure how it was formed, but I guess, I don't want to sound sour about it, but I would say two things about it. One is, I think it's a little odd that we have two Belvedere Council members and only one Tiburon Council member. I see that we have a post member, but we did initiate and are paying for the study, so it, that seems a little off to me. And then the other, what I would make is that, as the council member who initiated this effort, I'm sorry that I wasn't aware of this advisory committee, and I'd like to be on it if I can.
Yeah, I think one other just clarification. Is Belvedere contributing to this traffic study financially?
So I'll just give a little update. First of all, Bob McCaskill is not a council member in Belvedere. He is the chair of the Yellow Bus JPA, which operates the Yellow Bus School Program on the peninsula, and the JPA is contributing $75,000 to this effort. Sally Wilkinson is a council member in Belvedere. They happen to be both from Belvedere, but Bob is representing the JPA.
Identify him that way, as the JPA.
But I, but I think also my question is, is Belvedere contributing to this traffic study, or are they not contributing to this traffic study?
They're not contributing.
Okay, so why aren't they contributing to this traffic study?
We, we didn't ask them.
Yeah.
Well, well, also, that brings up the question of why would Sally Wilkinson be on this?
Yeah.
When it's a Tiburon study. In addition, I, I'd like to have this agendized to add a Town Council member, and I would like Councilmember Wellner to be on that committee. I would also like this item to come back to the Town Council for the formation of this committee, because I think my colleagues have expressed that they're uncomfortable with it, I'm uncomfortable with it. I do not remember voting on it. And, you know, this is something that the, the council really should have decided, or we should have decided with all of our council members present.
So let, let me just say that Belvedere belongs on it because they contribute to the traffic and know something about the Belvedere traffic. And I think they've been very active in providing information and comments. In the second place, I, I think I ended on it because I have been on the Transportation Authority of Marin Commission for something like 15 years. This is where we get major contributions to our traffic. And I have no objection to having another council member on it, but I just wanted to straighten out some of the thinkings of how this advisory committee was constituted.
And Alice, Mayor Fredericks, you should be on it. You've, you've been on TAM, you've done a lot on transportation, and also you're mayor. But I think we just want to, want to look at it as a whole. And I'd like to see this agendized at the next meeting for a council decision for action.
Okay. As I mentioned before, the study area is primarily along Tiburon Boulevard, Highway 131, all throughout the town limits and all the way to Main Street. We're also looking at Tressel Glen Boulevard and Pockets Paradise Drive. It weaves in and out of the town, as you know, as well as the county of Marin. We've identified a number of issues, as you can see on this map here, including congestion locations, spots of where the traffic signals are, difficult locations to cross the roadway. There are four schools. We're also looking at all three in the, the Reed District, plus St. Hillary. So these are areas that we're gonna be focusing on, again, related to transportation. The outcome, at the end of the day, is really a blueprint, or a transportation and infrastructure action plan, that is going to recommend things that can be done as soon as possible, as long, as well as longer range ideas. We're gonna be looking at the controls of all the, all the intersections along Tiburon Boulevard. We will be considering potentially some capacity enhancements, if that makes sense, as well as operational improvements, which I'll get to momentarily. Safety is a big issue. Part of the corridor is on the high injury network in Marin County. Transit plays a role, not only bus transit, but also ferry transit. We'll be looking at active transportation enhancements, for instance, bicycling and walking along these streets, parallel to the roads and across them as well. And as I mentioned before, the school area traffic routes, including trap, car traffic to and from the schools, as well as walking and biking. With that, I'm gonna turn it to my colleague Jen Schreiber, who's gonna just recap some of the high level, some of the existing conditions we've discovered this far.
I have a question on that slide. I noticed that the Caltrans proposed Class 1 and Class 4 bikeways are on there. Why, why is that on there?
I think you must be talking about this slide here. Yeah, Caltrans is part of their improvement program, their shop program.
I, I know what the project is. I'm wondering why this is on here. My understanding is that the bike lanes are separate, and that two of the members of your committee are actually against the Caltrans project. So it kind of concerns me to see this on here, because if the, if the bike lanes are separate, they would not be impacting traffic flow on Tiburon Boulevard.
Yes. So we're gonna be looking, we've been asked to look at the, what are called Class 4, separate bikeways, which will be extended from the 101 interchange.
Okay, who asked that?
Or they think the council did, when we were brainstorming about what should be in here.
All right. We're just, we, we just wanted an overview of all the possible projects and their impacts.
And then.
Informational.
Yeah, I have another comment that I would like to see added in. We've received a lot of public comment about transportation, about traffic, and about different ideas that residents of our community and non-residents have written into the council over the years. So through our staff, I would like that provided to our consultant, so that those ideas can also be explored. But I am going to caution you that two members on your committee have publicly opposed the Caltrans project for the Class 4 bike lanes.
Thank you for.
So I think that's very important information for a consultant to have.
So David, there are public workshops coming up.
Yes, as, as your Public Works Director mentioned, on December 3rd, there'll be a public workshop to discuss some of the existing conditions, get ideas for future things to explore.
So I would just make a comment about this. The one, one thing that appears to be missing here, and it's just kind of funny, given the comments that we had previously about the Belvedere members of the committee, it says future growth in Belvedere, including new housing. Of course, along Tiburon Boulevard, we have zoned for hundreds of new units. That should be, at a minimum, future growth in Tiburon and Belvedere, and probably should be flagged as a, you know, beyond just the Belvedere area, in terms of likely huge future impact on traffic.
Yeah, thanks for that input. It, it's shown in the caption box next, just left of the town of Tiburon. So we will be looking at the future growth for both the town and the city, to understand its impacts on Tiburon Boulevard.
I would also like to add, there are two very problematic intersections that are not included in the callouts here. The first one is Reed Ranch, where there is an, if you're coming, I guess, southbound, or maybe eastbound on Reed Ranch, and you, you have an unprotected left that you're turning to head downtown, that's a, that's a pretty dangerous intersection. That's something that I think needs to be called out, and, and has particularly problematic intersection when you, when you potentially add bike lanes, crossing that unprotected left. The second one is Upper Cecilia. That also, I think, needs a call out here on this, in that, in that it's, it's very, very similarly precarious from a left-hand turn standpoint, but even from a right-hand standpoint, because there's a, unlike Reed Ranch, where you have a stoplight within, I don't know, five or 600 feet, Upper Cecilia, you do not have that. You have kind of a, you're coming around a blind turn and headed right for that intersection. So I think that's something else I'd like to, to make sure we call out in these sort of, I don't know, pop-up video bubbles here in this, in this map. And then the last one, I think, that isn't called out, I would say the third one, which we've gotten a lot of feedback about, is Gilmark. So Gil Martin is one where, where we've had a lot of residents on Gil Martin, a lot of people who are, are, have children who have playdates on Gil Martin, that sort of thing, that, that are heavily concerned with the pedestrian traffic at Gil Martin. So I think that's probably a third one, which is a really dangerous intersection, if you're, again, making an unprotected left coming off of that street.
Great, thank you very much. We've been made aware of these and Gil Martin, as well as looking at potential how to cross Gil Martin, or adding a sidewalk down to San Rafael Avenue. So this input is, is fantastic. We're, we're taking notes.
Okay, there's two other things I'd like to add. One is, for many years, there's been an idea of a roundabout at Tressel. So that should definitely be looked at. And also, what came up in a recent JPA bus meeting was how the stop, how the bus stops on Tiburon Boulevard slow down traffic and affect traffic. And that's something that I think needs to be looked at. I personally think it's also unsafe to have bus stops on Tiburon Boulevard, and that would probably accomplish two goals, to move them off the Boulevard.
Thank you.
I, I think one other area that I wanted to ask about, if we can go back to the project purpose. And I think there was maybe one other slide, which, which, when we talk about outputs, I think that's also incredibly important, that we have really well-defined, I think there was a slide with an action plan.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, let's.
I think, I think what's, what's, what's gonna be really important out of this is, you know, we're paying, I don't know, hundreds of thousands of dollars for this, for this traffic study. And I think through the, you know, feedback through, through the, the Town Council election, and, and through general feedback, is that it's really important that we have measurable next steps. And I think that we have goals that we're, we're, we're trying to achieve here. So, for instance, if there are 2,000 cars per hour, right, and it takes them X time now, what are we solving for? I think that's, it's gonna be a really important part of this, and I'd like to see that in the next version of this, where, where there's, there's a, you know, you can get from, from Town Hall to 101 in 15 minutes, if we solve for these, these five or six problems. So I'd like to be able to, to, to make sure that, that it's not just sort of actionable in the, you know, in the, in the, the sense that, that there are steps, but I'd like it to also be measurable, and that we're, we're going towards a measurable goal through this process.
That's great input. We are actually able to measure a lot of things, including travel times per direction, different times of the day, different days of the week. Jan's also gonna be providing some information about different travel modes now, and we're gonna be projecting those in the future as well. So we'll be able to come back with some metrics, and we'll, we'll convey those and deliberate with the advisory committee on that.
And then in terms of, are you gonna cover the data sources when you, when you, when you go over, you know, how you're collecting data? What are, what are the different sources that you're using?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. All right, Jen.
All right, thank you, David. So I'm gonna give a high-level overview of some of the existing conditions findings we've seen so far. There's been a lot of data that we have gone through and collected and been using and analyzing. We're a little short on time here, so this will just be a high-level summary. But starting off, we were able to glean some information about the different modes that people are using when they're traveling. So this data is actually modeled data. It's from a source called Replica that models traffic patterns and conditions for typical weekdays or typical weekends. Here we're looking at a typical weekday. And this data is verified by a number of sort of on-the-ground sources. So this pie chart here is looking at weekday trips originating in Tiburon and Belvedere. So not just trips along Tiburon Boulevard, but the entirety of Tiburon and Belvedere. And we're really seeing that the majority of trips are made by private automobiles. So we're seeing 63% here. There is a relatively high share of walking trips, which is about a third. Unfortunately, with this data set, we, we really can't parse out what is recreational versus functional, but still great to see that a third of trips are from walking. Biking is at 3%. Again, some of this is most likely recreational, but we're unable to parse that out. And then much smaller mode shares for public transit and taxis and ride share.
One, one question. So on the last slide, can we go back to the last, the slide right before this? Oh, maybe my slide's a little bit different, where it says weekday Tiburon Boulevard peak periods are typically from 8:00 to 9:00 AM and 3:00 to 4:00 PM, where it's the line chart.
We are getting to that one.
Yeah, I think we have a different chart.
Yeah, I think there's a different one in the agenda than what you're presenting.
It's, it's coming up later.
Can we, can we go, can we go to that slide?
Sure.
So this has thousands of trips per hour? Am I reading that correctly?
Yeah. And so this is car trip only. This data was collected.
So I'm, I'm going somewhere, I promise. If this represents 63% of the trips, we, we have that many pedestrians? Where, when I'm looking at, at the, that, the last slide you presented, where walking accounts for a third, do we have thousands of pedestrians that are making trips per day up and down the Boulevard?
So the, the mode chart data is modeled, so you have to take it with a grain of salt. And again, it's, it includes recreational, it includes very short trips as well, just extrapolating based on a number of different data sources.
But is that, is that in, is there any of that, that's inside-out data, or is it all outside-in?
So that data from the chart previously, as we scroll up, sorry about that. Let's get this toggle. These are trips on a 24-hour basis of the breakdown of trips that originate. So these are the trips like when you're, you're leaving home, right? Private auto, walking, Tiburon and Belvedere. So these are all trips. When you move up to the slide that shows the vehicle trips on Tiburon Boulevard, these are the trips on three different locations. We did counts of cars at three different locations. The green line is on Tiburon Boulevard, just east of Lyford. The yellow is west of Avanida, and the orange is east of Blackfield. So you can see the traffic increases as you get closer to 101, right? And the travel shake gets bigger. But these trips are not all residents. There could be people coming in, right, from out of town, from different areas, for work, for service trips, for contracting trips as well. So can't quite divide the, the chart and say this is 65%, because this is actually more trips than just the residential trips, or trips that originate in Tiburon and Belvedere.
But these are trips that, you, you had just said, these are trips that originate in Tiburon.
The ones when the pie chart were. So we were actually, the first two slides before we got to this are, starting of the bigger picture, which is just trips that originate in Belvedere and Tiburon.
Okay. And, and this, this slide is inside-out. That's data collected in Tiburon.
Yeah, you may have noticed a couple, when we cut through the counts, schools in session this last month. Yeah, there was tubes placed on 131. You may have noticed those, and those were counting the cars all throughout the day. Actually, we did them for a whole week, and two weeks. Yeah. And this, these are the average of the weekday traffic numbers.
So may I, may I interrupt and just ask a simple clarification question? So the data is not collected in proxy kinds of things, like origin, destination from cell phone pings. It's actually from people standing somewhere and counting? That's a question.
Yeah. So there's different data that's collected different ways. This was done manually, with tube counts on the street. In the pie chart, they were showing the trip origins. That was done from modeling from, from, from Replica, which is a source that looks at census data. It looks at trips. It combines a whole bunch of information. We also have other tools that we subscribe to that does do exactly what you're talking about, looking at fleet vehicles. We also have other tools that we subscribe to that does do exactly what you're talking about, looking at fleet vehicles and cell phone data to, to um measure congestion and speeds along the roadway.
So, so I think the point I'm trying to make is that not all the data comes from actually counting and questioning. It comes from making assumptions about other kinds of data. Um, and what you can predict with respect to travel from that data.
Yes, yes. There's a number of sources. And what's interesting is ten years ago, I worked with uh Tiburon and the um, forgot what the study was at that point in time. We were looking at traffic congestion along Tiburon Boulevard, but the data was limited. There wasn't any big data sources really available at that point in time. So we could only look at traffic counts. But I think we're very lucky now because all this other information from uh all the data collection that we have from anonymized data is available and can really help lead us to understanding trip purposes, destinations, origins, and travel times um, which will be, I think, super helpful in coming up with potential solutions.
And these proxy sources actually can be verified to predict what we're interested in predicting.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Um, can we go back to the project timeline uh slide? It's like a slide back.
Let me see. Okay. I am skipping around and.
It's before that, yeah.
Okay, the schedule, the overall schedule?
The schedule, yeah.
Okay, bear with me.
Okay, no worries.
Here we go.
Okay, so on the overall schedule, it looks like there is one community workshop. Is that right?
Yeah, per our work scope, there is one community workshop on December third uh to gather input on existing conditions, feedback on what's working, what's not. Um, and ideas for potential enhancements. After we spend a number of months looking at um potential solutions, we'll be coming back to the council, and that'll be an open um hearing as well.
Okay, so I would like to see more community input. And I would also like to see the advisory committee meet in public and take comment from the public. Uh, I would like uh the public to participate fully in this study. And one community workshop is just not enough for our public to be allowed to uh really get involved with the, with the study. I'm super excited because this is the first time in ten years that we're doing this kind of transportation study. But I know in my time on the town council, I've received so many great ideas, and there's probably other ideas out there that community members have. So uh, that is something I would very much like to see happen.
Uh, let, let me just make a comment that all of this information and an opportunity to comment will actually um not only be at the community workshops, but when reports are brought to council. Uh, maybe that precludes having to have another whole set of meetings with the council and the community.
Um, so what I'm talking about is actual full transparency, so that when the decisions are being made about the plan by this advisory committee, that the public can be there and hear what the ideas are, so that they can have an opportunity to participate before it goes into a plan, and then they get three minutes to respond to that. So this is a really important study for the town of Tiburon. Um, I, you know, we did just have we, we had a big campaign here that Isaac just referred to. The biggest issue that I heard about was traffic on Tiburon Boulevard, and uh I also heard a lot of great ideas. So I would like to see the advisory committee meet in public. It's not a transparent process. If there's council members and, and consultants meeting and we have one community workshop, that is not enough for people to be able to participate.
Again, I would, I would like to point out that anything along the line will come to council itself, and there will be public input at that time. And if it's something where people need three minutes, it's the discretion of the mayor to gi- give them more time. I'd also like to point out that I have been on this council for twenty years. This is a perennial problem. It comes to us from time to time, and we try to figure out what a fix is. It's often just tweaks. The Boulevard has limited capacity. Um, often what happens at the end of this is there's some responsibility put on us as community members to look at our behavior that can address congestion. So it's a complex problem, and I think we need to move forward, gather the data, and then, once we have the data, um, open to public comment. No, no decisions are made in back rooms. It's just gathering data, comes to the council, an opportunity for the community, not only to suggest what improvements might be, but what other kinds of measurements might need to be looked at. Anyway, um, as you can tell, I'm not in favor of having extra council meetings, and I really object to this being um couched as decision-making in the dark. Anyway, you know, we're just receiving the reports.
Agree, but.
We're, we're receiving reports tonight. There are other people here. Let's receive the report, and we can make decisions on other meetings once we receive the port, report. Please continue unless there are further council comments. Seeing none? Please, David. Jan?
All right. So we were also able to get a sense of the trip lengths. So this is a, another sort of big data platform that we're using called um Streetlight. And this is one that takes um GPS and cell phone data uh to sort of um come up with statistics and, and trends around travel for a specific segment. So here we are looking at an average uh full day, uh full weekday for trips again originating throughout Tiburon and Belvedere. And we can see that twenty-seven percent of trips are actually less than four miles. So this is um uh, there's a potential here to maybe switch to walking or biking and taking vehicles off the road. Um, on the other end of that, though, we do see that uh quite a substantial amount of trips are longer. So approximately fourteen percent of trips are actually uh twenty miles or longer. So this is uh just really helpful information to um get a sense of how far people are traveling, what are their capacities to potentially switch to other modes, and where can we make um improvements along the way?
Um, I have a question. How do you know if they're going four miles versus twenty miles?
So this is based on the cell phone data. So it's sort of um, yeah, uses GPS to figure that out.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So we also looked at um typical weekday travel um to see what the peak periods were and what um what volumes are like along Tiburon Boulevard. So this graph is uh data that was collected over a period of two weeks. Tubes were put out along Tiburon Boulevard, um as David had said, in three locations. Um, east of Blackfield, west of Avenida Miraflores, and east of Lyford to collect vehicle volumes um throughout that two-week period. And so this chart specifically shows your average Tuesday and Thursday vehicle volumes uh along Tiburon Boulevard. And we can see that generally uh peak periods are from eight to nine AM and three to four PM. This isn't sort of across the board. You can see that green line east of Lyford actually has a slightly different peak. Um, but typically, traffic really ramps up quite quickly in the morning. Um, there is a little bit of a lull followed by a mini-peak around midday, um and then a PM peak around three to four PM and a slower easing off um in the afternoon. As David had said, um, the further west towards the highway you go, the higher volumes typically are. Um, and we are actually seeing that the volumes have decreased since the, the last counts in twenty-twelve. Um, so we're seeing four percent lower volumes east of Blackfield, ten percent lower volumes west of um Avenida Miraflores, and twenty-five percent lower east of Lyford. And then we also.
Do you have any time, tr- tr- travel time data as well that, that corresponds with that? Cause it would be nice to know like if, if vehicle traffic is off twenty-five percent, why aren't our travel times off twenty-five percent, you know, like? Or do you have that data? Are you going to get that data?
We do, we do have that data, and uh we also run it through, you know, the cell phone and anonymized vehicle information. The interesting thing, sometimes volumes in travel times aren't that correlated, because if you're at a saturation point, it's still, there's still a lot of congestion. We'll come back and demonstrate that. The, the di- the diagrams that we prepare are, are kind of complicated, but they show um, you know, travel times and speeds like tenth of mile by tenth of mile per direction by time of day i- in, in direction. We'll be coming back with that. For instance, if a, a goal is made to get a certain travel time, that's what we'll be looking at, right? At certain times, like uh, and, and we'll, we'll use that as a baseline perhaps. Little bit background, I do live in Mill Valley, so I did a study very similar to this for East Blightdale and Shoreline Highway a number of years ago with many of the same type of parameters and some of the data, not all the data, because we didn't have as much available at that point in time. So a lot of the things that you're saying tonight are the things we're going to be looking at, like what are the goals? What is the objective uh for demand, operations, capacity, travel time? And that's kind of the roadmap we'll be, we'll be bringing back. So hopefully that kind of brings things back a little bit more.
Appreciate that. Um, one, one other question. Um, so we have these um uh, traffic cams that register license plate. Is that, is that data where you can look at location of a vehicle? Or origination? Or is that, or is that done with cell phone and you don't need it?
Your, your cameras, I think, are used for uh tr- crime, crime prevention. We, we're not, that data's not available to us, so we're using the information we do have.
Is, is cell phone sufficient for origination?
Absolutely. We're, we're, we have millions of data points along Tib- Tiburon Boulevard.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, are you able to provide a list of, of, of data points at some point following this meeting?
We can provide where the sources are from, but it's an, an anonymized. I mean, it, it's something we cannot get license plate information, right? It's, it's totally anonymous. Well, but it's um, but we can give you the sources and um uh from the N-Rex and Streetlight data.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. So next, we, we tried to get a sense of the types of trips that were occurring. And so we actually did a survey, um myself and a colleague stood at the side of Tiburon Boulevard for three hours on a Thursday, um and essentially did our best to count vehicle occupancy and discern what types of trips were being made. So this isn't an exact science, but it does give us um a helpful insight into some of the trends we are seeing. So we were looking for single occu- or private vehicles to see if they were either single occupancy, multi-occupancy, or school trips, so transporting um children. We were looking for vehicles that were obviously contractors or other types of service, whether that's um, you know, at-home dog walkers, um laundry valet, or your classic, you know, landscaping, um other home service. We were looking for commercial trucks, so uh vehicles that were um obviously serving a vehicle. Other is uh sort of a catchall of taxi cabs, police, um other vehicles, and then bus, which is either your um AC transit bus or school buses. And so we were able to see um the trends for both inbound and outbound trip types, really to the fifteen-minute intervals. Um, right now, this pie chart for simplicity, we're showing inbound and outbound throughout the three-hour period, but we can really sort of get at the finer details as well. And we noticed that during this um three-hour period, the majority of vehicles that we saw were private vehicles and single occupancy. So it was sixty-five percent of the total inbound and outbound vehicles. Um, we did see that uh single occupancy vehicle rates were consistently higher in bounds compared to outbound, so heading in towards uh downtown Tiburon. Uh, multi-vehicle, sorry, multi-occupancy vehicles um were represented at about eighteen percent during that time period. And for these, we saw um much lower rates at the beginning of the period. So closer to three PM, the vehicles that we're seeing tended to be single occupancy, but later on in the period, closer to six, uh we saw more. So for example, from five thirty to six PM, actually twenty-seven percent of the vehicles that we saw were private multi-occupancy vehicles. Uh, contractors and service vehicles made up ten percent of the overall vehicles that we saw. Um, and at its peak, so from three forty-five to four, um again, there were twenty-seven percent of um outbound vehicles were these contractor vehicles. So we saw quite a lot uh that were leaving um heading out towards the highway during that period.
Can, can you actually just send us the outbound data later, like after this meeting, just because I don't care about the inbound data doing? I mean, all the traffic's outbound, right? We just, let's focus on what we, what we want to fix, right?
Yeah, and this is taken just uh north of Avenida. Um, but it can be done, it can be sliced fifty-minute increments in per direction. We just wanted to give you a, a big picture for right now. Great question.
I had one more question. How do you identify the contractor service? Was so, was that when you were standing there and identified the contractor vehicles?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, one of the things that I've proposed to reduce traffic is having our construction management plans specify that actual construction vehicles, that the vehicles doing the work are allowed to come into Tiburon and Belvedere, and a superintendent gets to bring a truck in, but that they have to make plans for their employees to park off-site if it's a large job. Uh, for instance, I just saw a roofing job where twenty employee vehicles came in and parked in a neighborhood. So that is something that I have proposed in the past. I would like that studied or commented on in this study to try to figure out if that would help us alleviate traffic. I think it would, but I want the experts to tell us uh your thoughts on that. If for the larger projects, we um added into our construction management plans that there has to be off-site parking in Tiburon and Belvedere.
Uh, let me just add to that, that, that um in conversations about this before, people have pointed out, or the contractors have pointed out um that the people who arrive on site are often subcontractors, not employees, over whom they have very little control, who are going from one site to another with uh their tools. And I think that needs to be identified too. Um, in addition to the good idea that Vice Mayor had.
Yeah, those are, those are great ideas. Uh. Um, so moving on, uh, school represented only about four percent of the vehicles that we saw during this time. However, if we sort of slice it and look at the fifteen-minute intervals, we can see that um earlier in the time period, so for example, from three fifteen to three thirty, this actually made up almost a quarter of trips. And again, just going back to how this is uh an art as well as a science, um we were counting vehicles that obviously had children in them, but you know, that doesn't include, say, a parent driving by themselves to school to pick up their child. So yeah, this is um like.
Might have to, you might have to double.
What was, right? What was the time period for that?
Uh, so we looked at three to six PM, and we saw that the peak was from three fifteen to three thirty.
Three fifteen for schools.
For school specifically, yes.
Um, I, um, kind of a holistic question that I think you are, you are getting to, which is contractors, there's a peak uh from three to four. Schools, there's a peak from three fifteen to three thirty. Um, one of the key things I think for, for us is to understand, we, we don't understand what the key database problems that we're trying to solve are. So if, if it is school traffic between certain periods of time, if it is co- if it is contractors or people that come into Tiburon to work, we really need to understand what the problems are based on data that we need to solve.
And I'll go back to this. You can see again that three to four is a peak, right? It's a confluence of a lot of things happening. As you mentioned, the schools are being released. Parents are driving to school, pick up, they're driving away from school. So two, it's two trips. Contractors are leaving town early. So that's why we're seeing an early peak here uh in the PM on Tiburon Boulevard. And we will be dis- dissecting that further, particularly during that period.
So um, y- you, you've done a few of these, I would imagine.
Yeah.
Um, what is the saturation point for a road like Tiburon Boulevard? How many cars can Tiburon Boulevard handle in an hour?
The, the intersections control the roadway, and we're seeing, I believe, about nine hundred to a thousand per hour getting through your signals.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and then I think I'll, we can wait for this till the end, but I, I think, I think one of the questions I have that I'd like to understand is, based off of your experience with these, if you had a magic wand and you could change two or three things, just based off of what you've seen so far, what would those be?
I'm going to ask you to, uh, to come back in a couple of months after we do a little bit more.
I mean, I, I don't mean based off of the data. I mean, based off of your experience. A town like ours with a road like ours, what works?
So I, I will say um, the road has limited capacity. There can be a little bit more tweaked out of some of the intersections, which I'll get to in a minute. Um, but when a road hits saturation, it's saturation, right? It's, it's what can we do at that point to manage traffic? Uh, short of widening the roadway to two lanes in all directions, all the way to downtown, um, it's going to be some stuff around the edges with, with the signals, perhaps looking at Tressel Glen. We're, we are going to look at a roundabout. We'll see what that does. Uh, but we are going to be looking to. Uh, but we are going to be looking at other modes too. Does it make sense to encourage shifting traffic? Moving some of the contractor traffic to different periods? Um, what can we do to encourage? Further pedestrian and bicycle travel? Um, on the other hand, there's also been a, um. Um, some proponents to put in some of the flashing lights to cross in the street. Right? For pedestrians, that actually is going to constrain traffic even more. So it's, it's that fine balance. So we're going to be looking at three things really at the end of the day. There'll be, uh, transportation demand management. What can we do? Again, with the contractors to encourage people to take trips at different times of the day. Right? Um, traffic operations. Perhaps looking at the traffic signals, what can we do? Maybe adding a, a turn lane or something. Uh, improve some of the traffic signal timing. And then last but not least, is, is there any, uh? You know, mi- minor capacity enhancements we can provide to help as well. Thank you. Yeah, we've, we've actually brought the congestion down in Mill Valley by twenty-seven percent. So thank you.
Um, I'm sorry, there'll be an opportunity for public comment in a while. Uh, David, I, I would like to run something by you. For, for quite a while. The public was really interested. It's no longer their focus in coordinating the traffic signals. And I had an opportunity to be chatting with, uh, one of the Caltrans directors about coordinating traffic. Signals. And he pointed out that if this were done. The traffic signals would not be controlled in some central magical place by Caltrans. But right here in town, by our own staff, really, is that the only alternative to control of traffic lights? And coordinating them?
Well. Thank you. That's actually the next slide here. We are taking a look at all the traffic signals. They are maintained and owned by Caltrans. We've been opening up the cabinets. These are these things that, that are six feet tall and two feet by two feet. They have, um, controllers in them and communication software. Some of the controllers have, uh, the capability for wireless control to talk to other signals. Some do not. Some actually do talk to other signals, some do not. There is also a couple that are coordinated, uh, between each other at different times of the day, and then the coordination is shut off. Um, some of that has occurred over time because of complaints, uh, and whatnot. I will say that. Signals, you need to be a little careful. I mean, you, we can only get so much out of a traffic signal. But if we can shift the timings and be more responsive at the time of day, when coordination comes in and comes out. Through for what's called an adaptive signal control system, which works, what we're going to be looking at. We could see some improvements, uh, along Tiburon Boulevard between. Sets of intersections or the entire corridor. So that's one area we're going to be looking at as a potential long-term remedy. On the short-term side, we are going to be looking at tying some of the intersections together and see if, if that can help. The coordination between particularly two or three closely spaced intersections, if they're talking better. And if they're coordinated. So there are some, uh, we think there is some low hanging fruit. And we're going to be, uh, be able to report back with our other experts in a, in a couple of months on that.
I have a quick question related to this. I remember we were talking about, um, in the context of broadband. Um, that. At one point, we were coordinating with Caltrans to see if we could, when they did work. Drop fiber optic cable that would then enable the coordination of the lights in a more sophisticated way. Is that still on the table or did that fall apart? I'm trying to remember what, um, Greg, what you told us about that.
Uh, without getting into the details, it's still on the table and that process is still ongoing.
Okay, alright, I just.
Yeah.
And it's coordinated with the study, that in terms of your information, you know all about that.
Yes, absolutely. In fact, um, we worked on the Sir Francis Drake Project, uh, a couple of years ago that. Retrofit all ten signals there and dropped in conduit over three miles long for the future installation of.
Okay.
Of, um, fiber for exactly that purpose.
Fiber, that's.
There's one more item that I wanted to mention. So. I seem to remember that when this RFP was put out, the council received a copy of it. And we gave input into, uh, the RFP, the draft RFP. Why that's important is because the council had a lot of ideas that they wanted to see incorporated in the study. So I wanted to ask that you go back and also look at that meeting or ask staff to provide all of those ideas. Back to you so that they're incorporated in this, um, in your work. Um, one of the ideas is, um, is, uh, Tiburon Trolley. Which is an all-air open electric vehicle that, um, I'd like to see going up and down Tiburon Boulevard. That would not only reduce some of the single occupancy vehicle trips and allow children to get from, let's say. You know, Del Mar to TPC or to one of the yacht clubs further down would allow, um. Also, we have a lot of, um, employees, new employees in town. So I'd like to look at whether, uh, shuttling employees and off-site parking, if that would reduce. Any of the trips along Tiburon Boulevard as well.
Great, thank you. Okay, what we've also been up to is looking at, uh, traffic. As well as bicycling and pedestrian travel and safety. At all four of the schools, we've spent, uh, uh, mornings and afternoons. Watching traffic, understanding the, uh, effects, uh, at each of the schools. Um, couple of highlights, of course, at Del Mar, we do, we saw tons of kids crossing. At Avenida, back and forth, the crossing guard has, has her hands full. Um, we are, see how that does affect traffic flow. Uh, both inbound and outbound, and we have, uh, some, some ideas for some immediate. Um, solutions for some signal control there. Uh, as well as that read, where, how the crosswalks are configured at that location and, um, you know, crossing the traffic. We're also seeing, there's, there's, it's great how many kids are walking and biking to school and using the path. And we think there's some safety enhancements that, uh, could be considered as well. So more to come that, on that. And again, on December third, when we do have our outreach, we're going to be asking for additional input. We want to get as much feedback from the community, uh, as possible. So our next steps, um, I showed you this earlier. This is our, um, overall schedule. You can see that yellow flag in the very bottom says, we are here in November. This is, uh, kind of just presenting to you what we know so far. There's some more work to be done on existing conditions. It's super important that we do hear from the community. We, we need to understand existing conditions, behaviors. Uh, before we jump into potential solutions. And so we take that information very seriously. So we're looking forward to that. Uh, um. Workshop. We're also going to be having a survey that is going to be made, uh, available to the entire town and city. And we will, uh, pull that information. We have some, uh, questions that our advisory committee has been looking at. And we will summarize that information as well. So we're about a third of the way through. So far, your input tonight is extremely valuable. We're going to be spending the next, uh, the middle third coming up with, with ideas, again, short-term, long-range solutions, many that you've recommended. Tonight that we take a look at. And then we will be coming back, uh, presenting to council with a status report in March. Uh, we did show in our scope of work, David is showing here is the second optional workshop, so if that's pulled back in. Uh, that certainly could be provided in about the April timeframe with the conclusion of the study. In June. Again, it's a roadmap for short-term and longer range ideas for, uh, both the corridor and. Or Paradise Drive and, and Tressel Glen Boulevard.
David, we've had a couple of questions about how the survey will be distributed. Can you? Give us a little information on that, Jan? David, somebody?
Yeah, the survey, um, one, we will, uh, provide it here at the workshop. And two, we will, um, provide it again on our website. Uh, we have not looked at mailing it out. But that is something that, uh, we can discuss as well. If town council wishes, it will be an added cost, kind of like what we did with the Parks Master Plan. If that is one thing that you would like, we'd have, we would go out and get a, uh. A company that would, uh, mail out the survey to every household and we would keep track of that. So that is something that if town council wishes.
And so when we have to make a decision on whether to spend the money to mail it or not, it would be nice to have some kind of, um. Idea of how much return you get on that over social media and other less expensive ways of distributing, yeah. Were you going to say something? No.
Yes, I have.
I knew it.
I have a few more questions. Thank you. Um, so, uh, so a couple more questions, um. Uh, is, is traffic like water? Do you need to remove obstacles to its path so it can flow more freely?
So interestingly enough. I'm a civil engineer, but I've studied water resources and became a traffic engineer over time, so I can answer that question. It is similar to water with one exception. In traffic, there's human behavior. And humans behave in different ways, right? People follow a different, different paces, people do different modes. But other, other than that, capacity and flow is very similar if you can deal with a steady stream.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, second question, little, little bit, uh, um. Different as well. In certain circles, uh, like the Bart Sams. Um, everyone has traffic figured out. And one of the prevailing, uh, uh, thoughts that I, I heard on the campaign trail as well as. At Sams, uh, is that if you clean up the flow of traffic to Tressel Glen, you're scot-free. So all we really need to solve for is between downtown and Tressel Glen. Given your experience, what do you think about that? Because you go from one lane to two lanes. If we, if we need to just get people. To the two-lane part, you're, you're home free.
We'll come back with some of the, uh, travel. Congestion information, certainly westbound or northbound, uh, is the most extreme, particularly as you're approaching Avenida and then, then Tressel Glen. Once you do get through Tressel Glen, generally you are scot-free. I mean, there's certainly at Blackfield and other places, there's left turns and congestion there. So, um, that is going to be one of the, the focus areas, particularly in the westbound direction. What can we do? Again, think about the conflicting movements. For instance, the left turns right onto Avenida, that's conflicting with the three movements, right? What's happening in Tressel Glen, the pedestrian movement. So those are some of the things, those are some of the things we're going to be taking a close look at.
Um, one of the things that you had brought up, uh, I think when Jack had asked a question and as a, a fellow, uh, data enthusiast. Um, existing traffic control systems sometimes talk to each other. I think you said, if I heard, heard you correctly, I'm playing this back. Some of them talk to each other, some of them don't talk to each other, some of them talk to each other sometimes. Um, is there, is there a list of that that you can also provide following this meeting so that we can at least, um, uh? And I, I don't want to say immerse ourselves, but, but at least sort of get a, a, a top-line understanding of, of, of what we're dealing with from a communication standpoint.
We will, probably in about a month, we're still doing some research on that. I will, I, I do want to caution you that. Sometimes it makes sense for them not to talk to each other and run independent based on cer- certain flows. So it's not always a solution. To tie every signal together all the time. So there's different, different criteria for that and we'll be looking, we'll be looking at as, as well.
Okay. Um, and then, uh, I think the, one of my last questions is. So, uh, you're familiar with the Caltrans work in terms of adding the bike lanes. I think there is. Heavy concern from neighborhoods that the bike lanes will cross. So if you think about the Reedlands, which is off Reed Ranch. Um, I think along with the, uh, the Upper Sicilian neighborhood, which I don't know if that's part of the Reedlands or not. Um, both residents from both of those groups have expressed heavy concern about bicycles. Uh, crossing their unprotected lefts and crossing even, you know, right-hand turns. Um. As a part of this process, it'd be great to understand, you know, you know, and, so that we can at a very minimum. Um, answer their questions and/or help contribute to the, to what Caltrans is doing, which I think wants to make. You know, everything is safe as possible and also help with traffic and repave, uh, Tiburon Boulevard. So I, I think we're all kind of. On the same team in, in a lot of ways here. Um, but I think it's, it's going to be really important that we have. An understanding and, and information flow about that in particular, is, is what is the impact of those bike lanes going to be? On traffic. Um, I don't know if it's going to affect the geometry of the roads particularly, but it will impact. You know. Coming in and out of those, those arterial. Roadways.
Yeah, great comments. So we're going to be taking a look at Caltrans's plans, which include to protect the bike lanes within the shoulders. Uh, assessing if they could impact traffic. Uh, providing maybe some input on to reduce any potential impact. I think there's also been a potential concern, like if somebody has a flat tire. What, what happens? Where do they go? So we're going to be looking at, at that as well. Caltrans hasn't yet, uh, defined the type of separation other than a stripe buffer. So, uh, we're going to take a look and try to, try to provide some guidance on that separation.
No, no further questions at this time.
Yes.
So, um, just sort of going back to your experience in Mill Valley and, and the traffic improvement you've seen there and other places you've. Done implementations or seen implementations based on your recommendations. If you think about those three areas you identified, demand management, operations and capacity enhancements. Like where, how do those buckets play out in improvements in, in your experience in, in projects around Marin? Like, what, what are the most impactful buckets and? How are they distributed?
Well, the most expensive buckets, right, are capacity.
For sure.
Uh, operations can provide the biggest, biggest bang for the buck at times. But the quickest one, uh, is often demand management. And in Mill, Mill Valley, for instance, we, uh, initially focused and recommended. Uh, buses, yellow school buses for the school, for the buses that are crossing, uh, Tiburon Boulevard. Going back and forth between Strawberry and Mill Valley, because they were causing all kinds of havoc, right? Um, there was also some, um, uh, operational enhancements to some of the, the key intersections. Uh, we did look at contracting vehicles and how to, to manage that as well. Uh, at the end of the day, we give the recommendations, that's up to the council or the town in this case, to implement them. Uh, in the Mill Valley's case, every year we do a dashboard, we do a, a report card to track it back. Their, their metric, their one sole metric, uh, is travel time. Uh, both along El Monte, uh, uh, shoreline and East Blightdale. To, uh, to twenty-twelve conditions was their, was their metric. And so it, it ballooned up, it's coming back. And, uh, it's because of implement, implementing demand operations and some capacity enhancements over time.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the council? Um, I am seeing none. I would like to open this now for a public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? Yes, sir.
So, uh, Matt Huckstetler, twenty-two, Raccoon Lane, Tiburon. Um, I'm so supportive of all of you as council members. I'm very impressed. I was watching at home and. I've never seen people so dialed in on the issues as you all are. Um, thank you. I have five comments. One, I think you need to fire this consulting firm. They seem deeply incompetent. When I look at what you're suggesting, you have a handle on the issues. They have no answers. They have cover-your-ass solutions. That are generated by a computer model. They have no handle on transit times. They. I, his quote was, if you replay it, we'll look for marginal improvements at best. The town is not looking for marginal improvements. We're looking for real improvements. These people plug stuff into a model and don't solve it. We need solutions. What I've heard from each of you is real solutions. Second, safety is the key solution here. We have elderly citizens here who are delayed getting to the hospital. After four minutes of not being at the hospital or not being resuscitated, your brain dies. We cannot have those deaths. The only solution would be air ambulances, which cost about fifty thousand dollars per capita. Either we need to get air ambulances in here to save citizens due to these delays, or we need to find a real solution. These consultants don't have solutions. They're just covering you and we want solutions. We don't want to sit in traffic. Third, the only real solution here is either an overpass at Blackies, expanding it to four lanes. Or banning left turns at Tressel Glen. Those are the three solutions. We all know it. They'll generate fifty million graphs for you, but those are the three solutions. Figure out which one makes sense. To me, banning left turns at Tressel Glen makes sense. The people who are there can either go via Paradise Drive or they can make a U-turn on Tiburon Boulevard. That'll solve your problems. Fourth comment, bike lanes. Why are we talking about bike lanes on Tiburon Boulevard when we have a bike path parallel to it the entire way? Like, why do you have bike lanes when you have a bike path right next to it? I have like no idea why they're like talking about this. Fifth, I fully support council member wellness joining the advisory committee and I appreciate council member tiers. Passionate support of it. As well as pass, council member tiers comments that thirty years of this being a problem is unacceptable. We've all wasted tons of time. If you think about the thousands of people who wait in line there, you multiply it times our hourly rate. The solution here is obvious. Any of the things you've suggested, or ban left turns at Tressel Glen, expand the Boulevard, or do an overpass. Otherwise, we're just window shading, we're window dressing with consultants like this who don't want to provide a solution. And think Mill Valley is a role model, which is the worst traffic I've seen in the world.
Thank you, Matt. Is there any further public comment?
Good evening, council members. Um, my name is Matthew Hartzell. I'm the director of planning at WTB TAM. And at the risk of stating the obvious, what is the main reason for traffic? It is too many cars on the road. Another way to phrase that is too many the, the mode share of trips being made, too many of those are being made by car, namely by single occupancy car. And I think that some of the charts we saw bear that out. So, um, obviously not every trip, cars are important part of the, the transportation systems. People, because of various needs and ages and distances they travel will always need cars. So, but a certain number of trips can be shifted from cars and single occupancy cars to other modes. Not maybe the 25 mile trips, but some of those trips that are less than four miles that we saw are make up a significant portion of the trips in Tiburon. And so shifting some of those trips to bicycle or pedestrian or transit is a way of reducing traffic, uh, the most logical and low cost way. Um, it, however, in order to convince people to shift their mode from single occupancy car to bicycle or walking, they need to have safe, separated, uh, infrastructure on which to do so. And protected bike lanes, sidewalks, bike paths are the, the best proven, uh, method for for, for shifting those modes and encouraging that modal shift, especially for those community trips, those trips less than four miles. And so that's, I think, what the Caltrans project is, is looking to provide on Tiburon Boulevard. And I do want to note to answer the, uh, question of the gentleman who spoke before me. Yes, Tiburon has an excellent bike path, the Tiburon Rail Trail. It was actually the first bike path opened in Marin County. It's historic. And it's a wonderful, uh, facility in the town of Tiburon. However, it only goes from Blackies pasture to downtown. It does not continue west of Blackies pasture. It does not connect to 101 or to Strawberry or to Mill Valley or Sausalito or any of the other number of places that people in Tiburon would like to be able to ride a bike to safely. And so that's what the Caltrans project is seeking to address. It's, the Caltrans project bike lanes only go as far as Blackies pasture and to the west. They don't go east of Blackies pasture. So I hope that this council will support the Caltrans plan to, uh, put protected bike lanes on Tiburon Boulevard. Most of which I will note is also in the county portion of Tiburon Boulevard, not the town portion, but there is a small sliver that's in the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Patrick. Thank you.
Uh, good evening, mayor, council members. First off, I really want to thank you for all you do. And I know you guys put a lot of hours in late night meetings. And it's exciting to be in, uh, in Tiburon and again, and to, uh, to hear an exciting opportunity here to talk about transportation. I'd like to, my name is Patrick Seidler and I'm from WTB TAM as well. Our headquarters are in Mill Valley. My, uh, my difference is I actually grew up in Bon Air, the first part of my life. Actually was there when the trains were still running. And, um, anyway, and so what I wanted to do is kind of take us back a little bit in time. And that's the handout that I just gave you right here. This is 1974 Marin County Bike Plan. And the 1974 Marin County Bike Plan identified several major routes. The second most important route identified in the county for bicycle transportation was a bike path between Tiburon and Mill Valley. And so the cyclists had wanted for 50 years, they've been, they've been asking to get that, that segment complete. What's great is, is that progress, that plan is now in the Mill Valley Bike Plan, the County Bike Plan and the Tiburon Bike Plan. And Mill Valley put a really, uh, important segment of that in their area. The overcrossing is, uh, talking about having separated bicycle pedestrian accommodation. And the segments of Caltrans is talking about building from the freeway to Blackies pasture, not beyond, would make a system where you could get from Mill Valley to, uh, Tiburon. And it, it, when it's finally done in the, in the interchange, the schoolchildren could actually get back and forth. And so I'd like to keep that in mind and, uh, and the, the thing that I'd like to urge you to consider is in the transportation plan is, what's transportation? It's the movement of people and goods. It is not moving cars. It's like when you look at, that's a mode of using transportation. That's a mode of transportation. But transportation is really about getting people and goods around. And so what we have is the most efficient form of energy transfer on the planet. Bicycles, more efficient than trains and planes and boats and cars. A human being riding a bicycle is more efficient than a salmon swimming through water. So aren't we be using more bicycle transportation and pedestrians? We're all trans, we're all pedestrians. Shouldn't we be accommodating pedestrians? There's 33% of the trips that are going on. We want to make it safer for them. And I have to tell you, we have been working with Caltrans on the project. And it looks great. And who's going to be the biggest beneficiary of it with those bike lanes? There are, that are really, there's some really good designs we'd like to share with you and take the time, maybe, you know, off, off the, uh, the meeting, but some really great designs that actually address all the issues you brought up about the congestion at the intersections. Some things that we brought in from some of our international best practices in Europe. And there's some really simple solutions and I'm sure the consultants probably, you know, be aware of it, but we're really interested in finding solutions for you. We're really interested in working with the citizenry and getting them around safely. And I have to say that you're on the precipice of some great success and some great ribbon cuttings. And the people of Tiburon being free after 50 years of being held down and not following the bike plan that was laid out to move about in your town to the store and to the schools. And yes, there are other ways of moving people around other than by cars. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there further public comment? Please come.
Good evening. Um, I'm going to talk about bikes as well. Uh, my name is Nancy Peterson and I live on Greenwood Beach Road. Um, almost adjacent to Tiburon Boulevard. We get a lot of that noise. Uh, and we're really familiar with the daily flow of cars, pedestrians and bikes. In fact, our son rode his bike to all three schools here in Tiburon. So I did a lot of helping, uh, accompanying him when he was young. You know, Greenwood Beach Road where we live is a really good safe route to school. Uh, it's a great way for kids to ride to school. It's not a great route for the level of increased biking that's in, in Tiburon and the combination of electric bikes, large road bike groups. Um, it's really an, uh, and we've, you know, again, uh, Patrick just mentioned it. We've been talking about this for years and, and I think I can really represent all of the neighbors on the street to say, we're not against bikes on our street. We're, we're worried about the safety and we know that there has to be a better route and, and are really, really pleased with the Caltrans plans uh, to move forward with that. Um, we've, you know, consistently endorsed an improved system of bikeways. I think this is a really good, there's a good plan ahead. So I'm really encouraging this planning process around cars to really look at what the plan is there and to think about that, that area between, you know, the freeway and Blackies pasture differently than you're thinking about the rest of uh, the bike routes, uh, as Matthew mentioned. Um, so we, you know, we highly, we've endorsed this, the Caltrans project. Uh, we're really supportive of it. Uh, uh, again, the neighbors are really interested in that. And, um, I'm really hoping that you will take a careful look at that as you go forward. Uh, I think it's really an opportunity, uh, to do something that's really good. And again, we're not asking the kids who ride to school to not ride on that road, but we really, we, we recently had have had a couple of incidents on our road where we've had people, uh, riding fast uh, and having, you know, having an accident. And, um, so, uh, we're really interested in a safer approach. Uh, the safety for us that live there and the safety for the people that are on the road. And really to, to see an opportunity to increase the biking so that maybe there are a few less cars on the road. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any further public comment?
Yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor and, uh, town council members. I hadn't planned to speak on this, but I can't help but listen. Um, I think Isaac's comment that it's, it is a lot like water. I mean, if you, it's kind of not like rocket science, right? If the cars can be moving along without obstruction and if people move along without obstruction and if bicycles move along without obstruction, that's the ultimate goal. I think people are going to be really disappointed if the result of all this study is just a little tweaks along the edges. So I would just encourage that the, if the objective is to move without interruption specifically during the peak periods that on the combination of the, um, sorry, I'm losing the, the, the roundabouts that we've seen it throughout. I see them going up all over California and in Europe. I mean, people have to get used to them. But a combination of roundabouts and overpasses that allowed cars to keep moving and people not to interrupt them with crosswalks seems to me to be a kind of a logical place to at least look and see, can we use some combination of those at the choke points and really keep the cars going and allow the bicycles to get over and people to get over. It's done at Marin Country Day in a very attractive way for pedestrians. It would take something longer to take a bike up and then over, but it's doable. And so I think if we're going to get to some really major changes for the future, those kinds of things need to be looked at as well as possibly the shorter ones, so the smaller things like traffic lights. The other, uh, comment is, I don't know if it's just because it's an early stage, but the scope of this work was to look at Paradise Drive as well. And I didn't see any kind of studies at the top, so maybe that's coming. But if it's not coming, it should be coming. Okay. If it is, then great, we're premature. Um, but it's only, we're only a month away from the, uh, community workshop. So that's, sounds like a lot of work that needs to happen between now and then if the community is going to really have any input. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment from the public? I am seeing none. Is there anyone on Zoom?
Yes, we do have one. I will. Sorry, he just lowered his hand. Give you one more chance to raise it. Okay, we'll recognize Greg. Greg, if you want to speak, raise your hand one more time. I think we're seeing none.
Seeing none. I bring it back, uh, to council now. Um, I think we have at least three of us who support considering another appointment um, to this traffic group that would include John Wellner. Yes, yes. Do we have to vote on that or how, how do we handle this?
Um, I've asked for it to be on the next agenda along with.
Do we have to wait till the next agenda?
Yeah, there's no action tonight, so we can put that on the next agenda, the, the committee and, and the formation of the committee and members on it.
Thank you. Is there any further comment? Action for the next agenda? I am seeing none. Uh, we move on now to a public hearing. Are you talking about the Zoom?
Yeah, the person for the comments on the previous section. Apologize.
Okay.
I think she's saying that the member of the public that was sort of raising and lowering their hand may want to speak.
Okay, I think that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Greg, we can hear you.
Oh, great. Thank you so much. Thanks for your patience in getting me on. Uh, I'm Greg Moore. I also live in Greenwood Beach Road and uh, on the study area map.
Have I gone deaf or, um?
I, I can see it's working, but it's not coming through the speaker.
I'm speaking. Hello?
Yes, can hear you now. Thank you.
Alrighty. Thanks everybody for your patience. I'm Greg Moore. I live in Greenwood Beach Road. And I'd, I'd like to ask that the study area map also include a bubble for Greenwood Beach Road calling out the unsafe conditions that need to be, be resolved on that road. Uh, for many years, we've been commenting to the town council about the road and the dangerous situation that has developed because of the number of bicyclists, uh, dog walkers, joggers, walkers, e-bicyclists, groups of bicyclists, fast bicyclists, slow bicyclists and cars coming into their homes on that road. Uh, we have an account transfer proposal, the ability to help solve that problem uh, by providing an alternative route for the faster bikes uh, and to make our roads safer. Uh, during peak times when cars are parked going to Blackies pasture on that road, it is a single lane roadway with all that traffic coming down it. Uh, and recently the town of Tiburon repaved the road and without contacting neighbors at all, stenciled bike lanes all up and down the road, which has only increased its visibility as a major transportation thoroughfare for the many, many bikes that come through Tiburon, but particularly on weekends. So we, we'd love to see the opportunity to help solve that safety problem with this. We don't want the Caltrans work to be thrown out the window, you know? Uh, because we think the proposed bike lanes there are a good ones and maybe there are some adjustments to accommodate the neighbors' concerns on the other side of the highway, uh, in order to make it, you know, work more workable for everyone. Uh, so I think that's it. Thanks again for listening to all the comment tonight and good luck with the rest of your meeting.
Is that the end of the public comment? And we've given direction to the staff. Um, so now we'll be, uh, moving on to public hearing one, which is appeal of the design review board's decision regarding 801 Tiburon Boulevard. May we have a staff report?
Yes, of course you may. Um, mayor and council members, um, I'm going to wait for the PowerPoint to come up. So, um, just, just maybe we should talk about the order here. So, um, what's going to happen is I will give a brief staff presentation. Then the appellant has their opportunity for presentation and then you as the applicant architect will have, um, your time as well. So, um, first I'd like to kind of lay the groundwork here, which is, um, to bring forth the appeal of the conditional approval of a site plan and architectural review, um, for 801 Tiburon Boulevard. So, um, the site is on the corner of, uh, Gil Martin and Tiburon Boulevard. It's about a 16,551 square foot lot. The application tonight, the application that was before the design review board was for a single family residence. Um, they asked for a floor A exception and they are including various exterior improvements. The existing home now is 1,460 square feet with a 600 square foot garage. So what would ultimately, um, what was ultimately approved was a 3,750 square foot home with a 600 square foot garage. And this project did go through four different reviews before the, um, or three different reviews before the design review board. The first one was on May 16th. Um, they returned on the 20th and then once again on the 19th. And I'll go through what actually, uh, each one of those, uh, return designs were in a moment. Um, and on September 30th, uh, the neighbor to the rear appealed, uh, the designer review board approval. So this is just showing you the existing condition of the home, um, that is there today. And, um, can we turn in a little, I don't know, this is kind of hard to see, but what I'm trying to show here is that the first iteration in May was that, um, the new home had an addition at the rear um, second story. I think, no, I'm not sure. Um, that, that's all, that's better off completely if you could. I don't have to read any notes there so the public can actually see. So, okay. Um, uh, to the rear on the right-hand side, looking from Tiburon Boulevard. So it would be the internal side yard. Um, and there was some concern by the adjacent neighbor. Um, and the design review board directed, um, the applicant to go back with the redesign and to move the massing and to also push back the front of the house for some sightlines for the adjacent property owner. Um, the second design review, um, as you see with the red portions, and I believe the architect's going to go through this in more detail. And so I'll do this quickly for you because I realize that the night is, is long. in more detail, and so I'll do this quickly for you because I realize that the night is is long. And they moved the the massing to the rear on the left-hand side. And the third design, which was conditionally approved by the design review board, was one that included pushing back of the structure as well as moving the rear addition on the left-hand side facing Gil Martin. At the same time, the design review board required that there be a reduction of a foot to the rear left-hand side. And then we received an appeal from the adjacent neighbor, and I'll go through the appeal ground. The location of the proposed second story will greatly impact the existing view at the main living area, the gazebo. And the condition imposed to the lower to lower the building height by one foot is not sufficient. The condition should be amended to reduce the building by three feet. Staff response is the town considers primary living areas to be the living room, dining room, family room, great room, kitchen, and decks associated with these rooms. The subject gazebo at ten Gil Martin is not considered a primary living area. And the design review board considering considered that when looking at the massing and determined that the sightline from the primary living areas are minimally impacted by the proposed project. And so to reduce the massing, because the board was concerned about that, as they asked for many revisions to that massing, the board conditioned a one-foot reduction in the height at the second story. And we'd like to note, depending on what the council decides tonight, that the resolution that was signed by the designer V board shows that the elevation, the condition appears to inadvertently reflect the elevation at the first floor and not at the second floor, and that the second story should be going from forty-five to forty-seven five. And ground two was that the vertical fascia on the roof wasn't addressed. There was some discussion during the design review board meeting, but it wasn't included as part of the conditions of approval. And so individual aspects of the project are not always expressly discussed during the meeting. While public testimony is taken into account when evaluated in an application, the board is not required to make specific conditions based on the objections presented. However, the implications of the roof height, massing, and the design were discussed by the board at all of the meetings and ultimately led to the condition imposed to lower the roof height. So what what's before you tonight is to look and to, of course, hear the testimony, both from the appellant and from the applicant. And that staff recommends the town council, of course, hold this public hearing and take the testimony, as I stated, and close the public hearing, deliberate, and consider one of the following options. Deny the appeal, upholding the approval made by the design review board, and direct staff to return with appropriate resolution for consideration of adoption at the next meeting. Grant the appeal, denying the application, and direct staff to return with an appropriate resolution for consideration of adoption at the next meeting. Partially grant the appeal by making revisions or adding conditions to the design review board's approval and direct staff to return with an appropriate resolution for consideration of adoption at the next meeting. And then the fourth would be to remand the item to the design review board with specific directions regarding any aspect of the project needing further review and deliberation. The board's decision on that remand would again be appealable to the council.
And with that, I'm available for any questions.
I I have a just a one clarifying question. In the staff report, it says in the summary, a neighboring property owner has filed an appeal regarding the condition imposed by the design review board to lower the height of the residence by one foot. That appeal, appeal number one, is that they would like that the 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 height lowered by three feet.
That is correct. So it'd be one foot as conditioned by DRB. They would like an additional two feet for a total of three foot on that second story massing in the rear.
And then I I had one more question as well. Going back to, I think, what you referred to as the the roof fascia, is that right?
Yes.
Was that something that was briefed to the DRB as a specific point that then was not responded to?
The the board brings up a lot of issues. They did discuss the fascia because there was a parapet roof to screen some of the solar. It was discussed, but it was not decided to be anything that a condition of approval or that was great concern to the DRB in that meeting.
Thank you.
Any further council questions? So before we proceed, I I will clarify what the process is here. What's going to happen next is the appellant has ten minutes to make a presentation. Then the applicant has ten minutes to make a presentation. We'll look for public comment, if any, from the room and on Zoom. Then the applicant, the appellant has a three-minute rebuttal, and the applicant has a three-minute rebuttal. So why don't we begin now with the applicant presentation?
It's the appellant first.
It's the appellant first.
Say again?
The appellant presentation.
The appellant presentation would be first, and then the applicant. They're different.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I know they are.
I'm sorry.
I'm dyslexic. I can't read. Appellant presentation.
It happens the other way a lot.
The light helps. Yes.
So I don't have a presentation. I'm just talking to.
That would be a perfect presentation.
And I've got my husband on the phone as well.
And please introduce yourself.
Yes, sorry. I'm Sally Sadie. I'm the applicant who filed the appeal, and I live on ten Gil Martin Drive right behind the proposed eight oh one Tiburon Boulevard project. And I've got my husband Frank Romani on the line. And so as Dana mentioned, so what the last year of the meeting, the last year of the meeting, two of the five DRB members suggested lowering the height by three feet. That that was their first level of feedback. One of the members completely opposed to lowering the ceiling at all, saying that the proposed height was just fine. So then they put in a motion to lower it by one feet, and the chair did did not put in a motion for three feet, even though most agree that the feet, three feet would make quite a bit of difference for us. And I know the town rules are that it's got to be a main living space adjacent to or deck adjacent to like the living room or family room. But I I have to tell you guys, like, we moved here in twenty sixteen. We redid the entire backyard, spent a lot of time, money, energy, resources, played by all the rules within the town. And we spend, we have children, so we spend the majority of our time outside. Like, that is basically our living space. Our kids like to play. They swim. They're they're not unsupervised. I mean, we're there. We've got a whole, like, living room set up in that gazebo area with the couches and the coffee table and refrigerator. And so to us, we we do consider that our main living space. And although the the third proposed plan is much better than the first and second, that second story, we still see it. It still cuts into our view significantly. But lowering it by three feet would would make a difference for us. And so we we really urge you guys to take that into consideration. I don't, yeah. Yeah, we just felt like during that DRB meeting, it wasn't, it was just like overlooked, even though two of the DRB members were in in agreement with it. So, and Frank, would you like to add?
Yeah, I don't know if you can hear me. Hopefully you can. Sorry, I can't be with you. I'm traveling. The the existing height for the ceiling is, I believe, proposed to be ten feet, and then there's some excess space on top of that. So several of the the DRB members noted that it could be lowered, and you don't need that excess space on top. That two-feet difference between the the three versus one actually makes a significant difference. If you are there, you can see it yourself. That two feet does make a difference. We do commend the fact that the Harke's are hopefully seem to be neighbors, have made significant progress, and we're hopeful that, and we're looking forward to this project being completed. That said, I I that this 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 distinction between the two feet, especially the way it was processed at DRB, really gives us some pause, and we're hopeful that you would consider that this could be this be lowered down to that three-feet level. And it still gives them at least eight-plus feet of clearance with on that ceiling and plus whatever addition they have on top on the the roof itself.
Do you want to add anything else?
I I think that's it. I mean, we have some trees and other things to work through with with Mr. Harke and his family, and I think those we will sort those out again. I'm hopeful we can, as the project progresses, work through some of those items. There is overgrown trees and everything else that have been neglected for a while. But but again, that's not the subject of this this town hall meeting. I don't want to take your time on that. And we're hopeful that we can resolve those types of issues. The main thing is the three feet versus one feet.
Okay. Thank you for.
So so I have a question. In the packet, there is a picture of the view impact. I believe you submitted it. Is that correct?
Which which which, do you know which page you're talking about?
It's a colored photograph.
It's exhibit seven, and it's the last two pages of exhibit seven.
And is that an accurate depiction of the view impact?
Give me one more.
Yeah, I I assumed that the appellant submitted it. Is that right?
Yes, that is from them. Definitely. It's the the photo that you showed with, looks like it's colored out
Yeah.
as a massing.
The photo that we submitted with the application.
There there are two of them. One, one, it looks like someone has colored it out.
Right.
The other one is
There's the last two. I don't have a color pack. Yeah.
Okay.
Is your is your question?
It was a question to the appellant about, just to affirm that that is an accurate photograph, representation of the view impact. Thank you.
Indeed.
Yes. Any further comments from the appellant? No.
That that would be it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, so in in the photograph, is that that's with the three foot?
Yeah, no.
No, that's that's.
That was the story poles, the proposed story.
They've reduced one.
So that's 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 that is that with the one-foot reduction? Or is that before the one-foot reduction, the photo?
Can I help clarify that? So the story poles have not changed to include the one-foot reduction.
Okay.
Right, but but there's two photos. One kind of has things like blacked out on it. And I'm wondering if that photo includes the one-foot reduction.
It looks like it's colored in.
I think it's the same photo. This one's colored in.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to figure out. I mean, I think that's what it is. I'm just asking the question.
So it does not represent what is proposed now as the project impact on the view?
The additional one foot
Yeah.
has not been changed as part of the story poles.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
That is correct. The the story poles have not been reduced. If that reflects the, as it is currently, it will presumably be lowered by one feet. But you can see that an extra feet and three feet as we are appealing would actually make a big difference. So but that you can just see it if you were on the property. Unfortunately, those pictures don't do it justice. But that i- if it goes from where it is by two to three feet, that actually that extra two feet makes a significant difference.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We move now to the applicant's presentation. It's ten minutes.
Good evening. My name is Colleen Paz. I'm here from Even Space Studios, representing the architectural portion. And with me is Rondi Johnson from Third Nature, representing the landscape design. And the homeowners are the hearts here to our left. We hope that by the end of this presentation, you find the grounds to deny the appeal and that our design falls within the guidelines presented by the town and the hillside design guidelines. I will try to just jump through some of these since Dana did such a great job presenting the the lineage. Here's the the home as built in nineteen fifty-two. As you can see, it was one of the original homes in the area. Here it is when the hearts purchased it, and here it is now in the context of the surrounding environment with the town very much grown up around it. The palette is decidedly a neutral natural with lots of browns and then a rich landscape palette that Rondi will get to at the end. Here's the house as viewed from the corner of Tiburon and Gil Martin. This rendering does have the roof dropped one foot, so you can see, get a better idea of where that second portion lies. This is as viewed from sort of standing right in front of the fence. Again, with the roof dropped here, and you can see ten Gil Martin above us there. The view from Gil Martin, we've got a lot of very mature vegetation here that helps screen the bedroom again here. And then looking at it with the story poles, again, we're keeping as much as we can from the mature trees that grow up that have grown along the Gil Martin side. And they do a pretty good job of hiding the one upper story. This is a view from the front, and from the front yard, you can't even see the upper level. It's actually behind the story poles from the first. So in looking at the site, of course, we we understood that views and neighbor views are paramount. So we wanted to keep overall the layout that was there with the garage tying us in to the Gil Martin side, bedrooms on the private side, and then sort of enclose this private courtyard so that they have some outdoor space that isn't like the fishbowl effect in the back here under the gazebo, and then put most of their primary outdoor living space in the front. Survey of the neighborhood and the homes. Again, here it is in the context, showing it at the bottom of the hill. The front of the site is very gradually sloped with the back of the site becoming more steep as it goes up. So with that in mind, we wanted to utilize as much as we could of the front and the flat portion without embedding ourselves too much into the hillside. Of course, the further back we go, the higher the house would lift. We also decided that we would take the the existing finished floor and drop it down almost two feet so that we could gain ceiling height, but without height to the overall roof. So the original ranch here, our roof line actually falls on average for the main level of the house below this existing structure. And we have one lifted portion that's the primary bedroom here, and it tucks into the trees along Gil Martin and the mature vegetation at the back of the lot. And you can see here is the the gazebo, and then the main level of the house here with the living room, bedroom, dining room, and whatnot. So when we were designing initially, we knew we needed to stay clear of this, which was again why we decided to step down, keep it as far forward as we could without getting too close to Gil Martin. I'm sorry to tell Martin, Tiburon Boulevard. Here it is as a massing model. So we have, you know, GIS data, and we have survey points to sort of pretty accurately represent everything here. This is again the story pole showing that one-foot difference for what will be or what was conditionally approved, more or less. And then this is the photo as submitted by the the owner of ten Gil Martin and probably used the wrong color to delineate. But the delta between the view looking basically at the fence line down into our property, the delta between what's there now and what what's proposed and conditionally approved is this small area here. So in looking at the hillside guidelines, of course, you know, principle seven states that change is hard, change to views is difficult. But it hopes that you keep certain things in mind, and that is, of course, maintaining horizons as much as possible, maintaining, you know, a center blockage is more damaging than a side blockage. You know, wide panoramic views can accept more blockage than a smaller view. And then, of course, when looking at these views to make sure you're representing it with a full panorama and not just a snapshot of a portion. So these are photos taken from ten Gil Martin before our first design review, and it shows the conditions of our lot behind below. So this is seated on the main patio, and the proposed structure is below this vegetation. This is outside the master bedroom. This is in the dining room, and this is from the kitchen. And so from none of these internal spaces or even the outdoor patio is the structure visible. Here is a photo taken from that patio and then the model representation. And you can see there that's the roof. Uh this rendering actually doesn't have the one foot drop, but it's uh it's fairly accurate. So you can see that from the main level of the house, it's an uninterrupted uh panorama. This is inside from a real estate photo and then inside from here and the structure is not visible. And then standing out on the main patio. So if we go back to this, um you know, there's still water view in both directions and this is the only infringement. I think uh it's a fairly small impact on a space that's not regarded as a primary living space. And from the rest of the house, um the primary living spaces are zero impact. And then uh I'll kind of zoom through the plan since you've seen some of it. But uh here's the main floor plan with the courtyard in the middle. Um we're still keeping the rear of the house that is close to the gazebo uh at like forty-six to forty-seven feet from the fence line instead of just a twenty-five foot setback to create some space there. This is the blue representing the one foot drop that's been conditionally approved. And there's that. Um here's a section from the gazebo. We're actually um I think only about we're less than twelve feet tall in line with that here. And again, stepping into the hillside there. That's the second story, which is in front of just vegetation. Another section. Uh here we are at the bottom of this big hill. Uh here we are at the bottom of us, another section. And now I'll give it to Rondi to go over the vegetation.
Thanks, everybody. I will be brief. My name is Rondi. I'm the landscape designer on this project. Colleen really accurately uh laid out um our primary concerns with maintaining views for the neighbors. We've not placed any large trees in the backyard. There's the front, but this is the back. This is what we're really talking about. There's about fifty feet from the back of this house to the back property line. The finished floor inside the house is twenty-four, twenty-five feet. The base of that fence that we are not changing, the fence on the property line between the two residences, there's an open black chain link fence. We're keeping that as is, not changing that fence whatsoever. Um you'll see on this these sort of star shaped vegetation. That's the neighbors' tall tropical plants that are there. So we really have maximized a location, I think, to really carefully screen this second story. And of course, we hear the neighbors. We absolutely recognize that this property up until this point has had a lot of dead dying and in decline vegetation. We have every intention to completely clean the up understory, not keep any top trees, maintain and make beautiful this really important intersection in your town. Here you can see a long section showing the back, showing the oaks. Uh we want to keep all the existing oaks along Gil Martin, though we would absolutely clean the understory and remove in any dead and dying trees along that streetscape, but keep those native trees. And this bottom drawing here shows an elevation looking at that back fence. And what's not here are those tall tropicals that the neighbors have, birds of paradise palms, that really um screen a good portion of this landscape from their view. And our house is down at twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five finished floor and elevation of the first floor and the base of that fence is up at about ranges from about thirty-six, thirty-seven to forty-one feet. Thank you so much.
I have one last thing to add, and it's kind of like a math nerd thing. But uh the one foot regard, the one regarding the one foot and the the three feet, if we actually averaged all of the numbers that the DRB was shouting out, we would have a number just above one foot averaging all five members in their numbers. So uh so three feet would be the the high end of that curve.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um I I had a question, if I may. Um so when the appellant was presenting, uh she indicated that there might be room in the in the roof that was not used. So I'd like to know, is there any room in the roof that's not being used?
So we set we set a parapet, you know, like a sort of a fake edge to the roof to enclose where we assume all of our PV will go so that you're not seeing the edge of it as much as you would with a flat roof and the PV sitting on top. So losing that foot, uh we basically lose uh the parapet. And that fascia is now just uh just enough curb for drainage.
You said where the PD would go?
Oh, sorry, uh photovoltaic.
Oh, photovoltaic. Okay, so that would be solar panels or or what?
Uh yeah, it's required uh by the town to have a certain amount of photovoltaic on all new projects or projects with this level of remodeling. And so we don't know the size yet, but we know we have a large amount that we need to of roof area to save for it. And so the hope is just to screen it as much as possible.
Okay, thank you. I have one more question. Do you do you know how many feet that requires or you don't know yet?
Like, can you make? How much surface area? Uh no, I'm not that kind of math nerd, but uh it depends. Uh it's it there's an equation or you can, there's two options. One's an equation. And uh I want to say it's at least a hundred square feet, but uh it it could be changed by by the time we calculate.
Thank you.
Thank you for the questions. Thank you very much.
I think there are people from the public.
It is. Um Madam Mayor, Town Council members, um good evening. My name is uh JJ Hart. And this is my wife Carrie Hart. We are the owners of Eight-O-One Tiburon Boulevard. How are you? Um we purchased the property with the dream of building obviously our new family home. Um this has been a very costly and exhausting um process for us. Um from the beginning, we feel our design has been very respectful of the neighbors and overall the neighborhood aesthetics. Um we've made multiple design changes from our original plan to appease the neighbors on both sides, including moving the second story to the requested location on the lot. Is I'm the owner?
No, technically, you're you're the applicant or the applicant's representation. So we can allow it if you want to at the discretion, then give the other side an extra two minutes if they'd like it. Public comment, correct? Because this is the applicant. Well, no, it's part of their presentation and you 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 have the discretion to allow more than the ten minutes.
Glad to exercise that discretion. Now I know what's happening.
Okay, sorry about that. Um so just to wrap up, uh we we've made multiple design changes from the original design to appease the neighbors on both sides. Um our approved second story is is already way under the allowable height limit for the Tiburon guidelines. The request for us to further reduce the height would greatly impact our design, diminish the head height in the master bedroom. Um I believe the appeal is without merit as we are not impacting any um primary views. And we asked uh that you give us full approval to move forward and build our home so we can just move forward. Thank you so much for your time.
We could offer additional two minutes to the appellant and then open it up for public.
Although they didn't use their full time, I don't know if they have.
Should the appellant have the added two minutes before I speak?
Yes. Does the appellant have anything more they wish to say? And I remind both parties, they all have a three minutes for rebuttal as well.
Yeah, I think my husband wants to say something.
So hopefully you can hear me. Um again, I did this uh when this was submitted, there was um uh it went through multiple iterations as as uh so Hartay noted that um the the property itself relative to the total size is very outsized and there's a number of variances that was requested. We did not object to those. What we had issues with was this primarily the the height of this. And that's really the topic of this. They can still work within what they have. They still want eight plus feet of clearance from top to the to the ceiling that's planning. And allowance on top of that, but that two feet, we're talking about two feet, that um makes a significant difference. And again, I um if you were at the property, you would see that and you would see the impact it does make, notwithstanding what the maybe said over there. So that's why we uh are kindly asking or urging you to consider that. And that was also like uh at least two, if not three, of the design review board members suggested. In fact, some of them did not even want a second floor, but we were past that. So with the second floor, they can still have the views. They can still have everything they want, which is perfect. Um but just uh please shorten that by at least a feet to two feet further beyond that initial feet.
Thank you. Um is there any further public comments in the room?
Yes. Madam Mayor, council members, thank you for this chance to speak with you. My name is William Rolfe. My wife Meredith Rolfe is here. We own the uh house directly across Gil Martin uh from the subject house here. And uh we were consulted extensively from the start of this project. And uh we were, our concerns were accommodated without any problems. We are entirely satisfied with the plan as uh it's set up now. And uh we're looking forward to having our neighbors move in. We, it this has been a protracted matter. And we are anxious to not have a vacant house sitting on the lot across the street from us as it has been for a number of years since Ruth Wasser died. So we would encourage the uh the uh council to accept the plan as it's currently set up. Thank you.
Seeing none.
So now is the time for the appellate rebuttal of three minutes. Is there a rebuttal from the appellant?
Do you have a rebuttal?
You're not required to use it. You could just, you have an additional three minutes if you want it.
Thank you.
There's no rebuttal. No rebuttal from the appellant. Now the applicant has up to three minutes to offer rebuttal for anything said in the public comment.
Uh do I get the slide for the rebuttal or?
So we now move into the applicant. Are we going to the next rebuttal?
No, they're done.
All right, please.
No, I'm trying to keep it short so we can wrap it up. Um just wanted to dwell on a couple of images. Something have something to um. Um so again, just one last look at the um location of the story polls and the location of the house above. And just the the clearances that are there are, the top of this house is just above the fence line along this hill. And the main floor of this house is, I think, almost fifteen or twenty feet above our highest point there. And so again, just looking at story polls and then this photo being um what I assume is the absolute worst photo that one could get, you know, going up to the fence line and looking down. Um it is still a blip on this vast horizon of of view. Thank you.
Is is that slide from the gazebo or where's that? Where what's that view of? Where's that from standing on Tiburon Martin?
This is from the uh the appellant's gazebo, or actually um I can point to it here. Um it is from uh this is the gazebo. And so it's taken somewhere um.
Okay, so it's taken. It's taken from the gazebo looking to the right.
Correct, it's.
Looking straight.
From our bidding area.
Right, right, okay.
Um yeah, again, I can show you the um the image here. This is uh if you cut a line straight through this, which we've done all the way up the hillside. Uh this is the gazebo and this roof height is lower than the existing ranch shown.
Thank you very much. I bring it back to the council now for discussion, uh motion and a vote. Is there any further discussion? Yes, gentlemen.
Yeah, um I think this is one of those situations where um uh I think this has been a uh well litigated site. I think it's a very thoughtful design. I think they did a lot of modifications for their neighbors. And I think DRB is one of our best committees, commissions, uh boards, and they're very thoughtful. And uh I don't think it's uh fair or appropriate for us to deconstruct their conversations, not having been there. They're certainly allowed to compromise uh amongst themselves, debate between zero and three feet and come up with one uh as a reduction. So uh to my view, um we should deny the appeal and respect the decision of the design review board.
Would you like to make a motion?
I would unless someone else has comments. No? Okay.
I I think I feel the same way. I mean, I I appreciate the fact that there's an impact on the Sades and the Ramani's view. Um but it's, you know, the design review board extensively reviewed this and they came to determination. I don't see that they did anything wrong. Yeah, there was disagreement, but that's okay. That's part of the process. And I I can't imagine, I don't I don't see a reason to to accept the appeal.
I agree. You know, often they will discuss five or six variables um with respect to a a presentation and then hone in and vote on only one. They don't vote on each and every uh discussion item uh that comes up in the conversation that's been accepted and a lawful part of of the process. I also uh I have some sympathy for where you choose to spend most of your time in your house, even if it isn't in protected areas. But on the other hand, this is a rather expansive view and it is rather de minimis post part of water view that is gone. I too support the DRB's um decision.
Uh so here we go. I don't have the votes, but this is what I would love to see happen in the spirit of, you know, neighbors living together uh for a while. Um I think when parts of a water view are taken, it's really difficult, parts of any view. Um and I also have great respect for the DRB. But what I would love to see is a friendly amendment to the motion that would be that if you don't actually need that extra part of the roof height for the photovoltaic panels, that you would consider taking a little bit down uh for the neighbor. That's what I would like to see uh as a friendly amendment uh to the motion. And it there is, John made a motion or he's gonna make a motion.
I'm gonna make a motion.
Okay, well, I'd like to see that as a friendly amendment. I do think views are important. I do think if um all of that space is not actually being used, um it would be something that would uh help the appellant. I also want to say we do have an appeal process and the appeal process is for appellants to come before us and uh and uh tell us uh why they think things should be changed.
Um I would like to echo uh Councilmember Thiers' sentiments. Um I think, you know, it it can be um, you know, a a bad way to start out where you have two neighbors who aren't, you know, um and it's difficult, right? It it's difficult. Views are difficult. You guys are building your dream home, I hope. And I think um uh you know, I I think your neighbors probably understand what that's like and what it's like to 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 want to um, you know, have some nice views and enjoy their family time and that sort of thing. So I think I think I would I would also echo what Councilmember Thiers has uh has proposed, which is um DRB says one foot, they're asking for three feet. D R B says one foot, they're asking for three feet. It sounds like they'd kind of be happy with two based off of, I, maybe a couple of comments that I heard Mr., um, Ramani had, had mentioned. If there's a way to meet in the middle and then we don't have to worry about, you know, these sort of appeals and that sort of thing. I think that would be an incredible way. I, I think show of good faith too. Um, as, you know, new, new neighbors, uh, moving in together and it might, it might, uh, ease what could be a, a problematic relationship in the future. I'll sort of share an experience of my own. Um, I had a, uh, an elderly neighbor who, um, decided that he just didn't like any sort of change whatsoever and held up a ten-foot section of fence that I wanted to replace for a year and a half. Over, he wanted it to be four feet. The existing was six feet. You know, so you could have worse neighbors. It sounds like they want to work with you. Um, that's, that's my only proquest.
Okay, I hope somebody makes a clear, uh, motion because making it conditional on if you can do it is, is really helpful.
I got it. I move to deny the appeal.
Second.
Do we need a roll call vote here? No. I think so.
I think we do.
You're asking for roll call? You ready? Councilmember Nick Far?
No.
Thank you, councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Wellner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thier.
No.
And Mayor Fredericks.
Thank you very much.
And I'm all for voluntary solutions, but I don't think that voluntary solutions can be mandated. So that's why.
I, I, I think that it can be added into the motion and it's not a mandate. It was just asking the, the, um, applicants, uh, yeah.
I, I think there, there's clear direction now. So, uh, let's move on to something we can.
Madam Mayor, would you put your microphone? Um, I'm not sure it's on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do I need to say everything all over again? Thank you. Uh, let's move on now to the discussion item very quickly. I, um, asked that we put this on the agenda to discuss the town council rules and protocols manual and provide feedback to the staff on its next steps. You know, this particular document, um, just informs our appointees and our council of practices and current policies. It's a resource, not a mandate. It was several months in the first subcommittee, which was councilmember Ryan and myself. We did extensive research, as did the staff. And now it's been a whole year in the second subcommittee. I think this is an important document. It's helpful to the appointees on their duties. And it's really helpful to the public on how our government works. I'm going to ask you at, with this agenda item, uh, to make a motion, uh, to put it on the, uh, council's next agenda as an action item. Unless you would like to discuss it further tonight.
Um, I guess I would say a couple of things I would say. One is, uh, I do have comments on it. I think there are parts about it that are problematic. Uh, we haven't had, it's been a year, but we, in recent months, we haven't had an opportunity to meet to talk about it. And I'd like to be able to do that with my subcommittee member. Um, so, uh, I'm not sure the next meeting is the right one, but I think we'll have, uh, uh, recommendations sometime soon. And if you'd like to move to add it to the agenda, you can, but I'm.
Well, what I would, would like to do is get it on the agenda with a commitment that, uh, it, the work will be done and we will discuss whatever your considerations are.
I hear that.
Okay, so I would, um.
Actually, yeah.
Uh, so I, I have a, I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I think I am the most junior member of the current town council pending, um, vote count. Um, but when I, when I joined, uh, I don't know, maybe a little less than a year ago, um, I think Greg and, and Ben walked me through a pretty extensive sort of like do's, don'ts, you know, that sort of thing. Um, I, I'm, I'm unclear what the difference is between that and this.
This is just, uh, uh, an amalgamation of everything they told you and other information about how local government works. It is something that has been the practice to distribute this, um, until this particular council. I think none of you had the benefit of that. Uh, but it is a document that really kind of puts all in one place, how the process works, what the expectations are. So for example, we have had members of our appointed committees talk as though they talked for the town. Um, and it was just a matter of not realizing what the role of an advisory committee is. Had they had this kind of information, the, there would have been less angst about what various meetings conclusions really meant to the council. That's just one example. And there are many of the councils too. It's really hard to talk about it in the absence of the document. Um, and all I'm asking is that everybody read it. And if you have some objections, which apparently councilmember John Wellner does, we make those changes and keep this document, um, revised because right now we have a very old document that is called Practices and Policies.
Well, I would just point out the, the difference between the existing document that we have and this document, if I'm not mistaken, is that there's a, you know, there's the appendix that's to this, which is basically staff document. I'm not doing that, right?
I, I was.
Oh, okay. Uh, which is essentially a, a staff document listing all the various rules that people should know. This would be a council approved set of guidelines, which I think is different. Uh, so, um.
But we already had that. We, we actually.
I, I want to agree with councilmember Wellner. We actually don't. This document was drafted and it's a different document. So it's not the same. Uh, the subcommittee will meet. I don't know if it will be before the next meeting. And this is probably not the highest priority because we have a really functional council. A lot of times these documents are put in when the council can't talk to each other and can't agree on things. But I do want to point out, this is a different document. It's not something that we have been, um, using. Um, I think there has been an informal process where new council members are kind of talked to about what, uh, we do. But I do, um, think that, um, that, uh, this, yeah, this is a brand new document.
So, so I, I'm, I'm not sure what different means because I'm not sure what you're using as a reference.
I mean, is there a council approved set of guidelines that we're modifying or is this the first time?
This is what you're supposed to be doing. And some of it is just updating. For instance, there's been a change in the law about what is acceptable, um, number of conditions and number of Zoom meetings.
No, 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 but what I'm asking is, is there a previously council approved set of guidelines?
They were there when I was first counsel and once in a while we talked about them. We didn't have a vote on them. The reason we were talking about a vote now is because various members of this council had various ideas. Let me tell you, every jurisdiction has this document.
I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not. Can I, can I sort of make?
Attacking the idea, I'm just asking factually. I don't think there is a document available that the council has previously approved.
It sounds like the, the, um, that, uh, Mayor Fredericks would like the subcommittee to, to meet and come up with some recommendations.
Yes.
Um, I think, I think that's a fair, fair ask. Um, it sounds like they haven't had a chance to meet.
In a year, yes.
In, in a year, happens. Um, I, I would like to give them the benefit of the doubt and maybe give them some additional time like we would with, with, uh, maybe someone that, that brings a permit and doesn't do the construction for four years.
No, I agree. I want some closure on when we're into it. And there was a previously existing document that we started with.
Can I clear up one thing about the two documents? So right now the council does not have an adopted version of this document. What we do have that is attached as an appendix is this.
Staff memo.
Staff memo that we give to boards and commission, newly appointed board and commission members.
That's what you're talking about.
That's right.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that there's a difference.
That's appendix A, right?
Yeah.
Appendix A is the memo.
All right. Well, how about I make this really easy? Um, since you don't commit yet, um, I get to bug you whenever I think about it.
That is fantastic. And I would expect no less. I would expect no less.
No less.
Can I make a motion?
Some point I get to shame you.
Uh, I think you are. Yeah, that was tonight. Tonight was the public flogging. So thank you, Mayor Fredericks.
Mayor, if I may, we should open up for public comments. See if there's any other public flogging.
Yeah.
Is there any public, uh, a comment on this? Are you sure?
I am absolutely sure.
Okay, fine.
Good idea.
This, uh, no, really. I think this is important. I think the process and a mutual understanding of who gets to talk, uh, for the town. Um, and just letting people know, uh, what the Brown Act really means to us because that's incorporated in some of these considerations. So we move now, uh, to council reports. Town managers report.
Um, I have a report. So I just want to make sure everyone is aware that, um, I have started along with the staff of the Golden Gate Bridge Board, a survey for Times, for the Ferry Times. So I want to make sure that everybody knows about that, that you get it out to your networks. Um, it was already in one of the TIP talks, I believe. Or it will be in the future. Um, and I just think it's really important because, um, we want to make sure that our residents are using the ferry and that the times are working, uh, for our resident schedules. So make sure everyone you know, knows about it.
Yes, and I got a notice on that too. And it is already posted on Nextdoor, but it'd be great to have it in TIP talk.
Um, I, I would, I would like to add, so if, if you're on Golden Gate, uh, Ferry's email or, or text list, they, they have sent that out. So I, I got the, I got the, the survey. I, I filled out the survey.
But, but usually those are riders and it would be great to have a broader response from people who might take the ferry if it came at a different time.
Right. So if we could get it on our social media and everything else that you guys, that staff thinks would be appropriate, that would be helpful.
All right, and you, yes.
Um, I, I would also, um, like to just mention that we, uh, have just had an election. And would like to thank, uh, town staff and county staff for the, um, thoughtful education through the process, helping to file paperwork, um, on time or otherwise and, um, uh, and, uh, and, and that's it.
Thank you. That's a good one. Any town manager report?
I want to add on to that.
Oh.
For a minute. I just really want to shout out Lee, um, our town clerk for her professionalism. For her dedication, uh, to elections and also to her ability to, uh, maneuver between many candidates competing against each other with grace and, uh, professionalism. So Lee, you're, I've said this before, you're an asset to this town and I want to thank you very much.
And I second that. All right. Any further comments? Any further reports?
No, Madam Mayor.
Um, now is the time for public comment on closed session items. Oh, I thought you were here just to enjoy it. Come.
I'm so tired. And I know you have a night ahead. Um, Madam Mayor and Town Council Members, I'm Jeffrey Shannon, as you well know. And I sent you another email. Um, I think I got it in Tuesday morning, just to, I was canvassing in Nevada over the weekend and I did not have time to draft this until Monday, so I couldn't get it in by the five o'clock, um, request. Um, it's, it's long, um, but I hope that you have had a chance to look at it. If you haven't had a chance to look at it, please do. Um, I, um, was trying to anticipate what you are going to be hearing, um, tonight. And it's in, it's impossible to separate the lawsuit from the plans ahead. So I don't know what decisions you're going to be making tonight. So I wanted to be as thorough as I can, imagine myself as a fly on the wall where I'm not having any opportunity or no one's having an opportunity to present potential other sides or other things to think about. So I tried to pretty much cover the field as best I could. And, um, the thing that's most important about it, I think, is that, um, besides the legal considerations is there is a, a path forward that I outlined in the email that I think we really haven't focused on before. That gives the town a, a good path that I think will achieve all of the objectives. I, I, I called it the, um, revised capacity, um, uh, option because if you look at the numbers, it's about number crunching. If you look at the numbers, there's an under designation of capacity. And we're really only looking at thirty-three units to get back up to a six hundred and thirty-nine RINA count to satisfy that aspect of what you have to do. Um, and you will still, if you increase the capacity projections, there's still a forty unit buffer, um, maybe even a larger buffer than that. There's a, there are ways just through looking at the numbers again to achieve all of the objectives and have a compliant housing element after taking out site age without increasing the density of downtown. I think, um, there's probably even some misperception that all of downtown or a lot of downtown would need to be increased. I don't know that any, any floor increase wouldn't be necessary to, to four floors anywhere, um, or that even any density would be required. Um, so I think, um, I hope that you will look at it. If you haven't before, consider it, um, as, as an option. There are many options actually besides site age for very high density and lots and lots more density downtown. And I hope that you will pursue that path and put an end to what's turning into almost two years of, of contention and, and, um, I also sent a supplemental email today, just advising, um, having looked at it again, that, um, you can add some additional sites if they exist without having to do a new E I R that's written into the law. So even though, um, you have a set of sites in inventory with an existing E I R and alternatives in the E I R, you can add sites if you have them, such as other S B nine units that might now be, uh, available to you without having to do any kind of revised E I R. Thank you very much and, uh, have a good evening. Uh, and I hope it's not too long.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now adjourn to closed session.
We do a five minute break to?
Oh, what a good idea.
Okay, good.
Uh, after five minutes.
Are you breaking?
Okay, we are reconvened after closed session. Is there any report out of closed session?
Yes, Mayor. The council met on two items, and on one item, on the litigation matter involving Site H, the council authorized on a three to two vote to file a notice of appeal of the judgment. Vice Mayor Holly Thier and Councilor Isaac Nikfar voted no. And with that, that concludes my report.
And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.